Good evening. Welcome to the Monday, June 9th, meeting of the Falls Church City Council. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Three allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, will you call the roll call?
Mr. Baruch?
Here.
Ms. Connally?
Here.
Mr. Duncan?
Here.
Ms. Oliver?
Here.
Mr. Snyder is out.
He's absent on work travel.
Mr. Z?
Here.
And Mayor Tarter?
Here.
Thank you, Council.
Do we have a motion to adopt the meeting agenda?
Mr. Mayor, move to adopt the meeting agenda.
Do we have a second?
All second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carries. We have a proclamation. Mr. Duncan, would you like to read the proclamation this evening?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It'd be my honor to do so. Proclamation, whereas the Stonewall riots began in New York on June 28th, 1969, and are regarded as a catalyst for the lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender, also known as LGBT movement, for civil rights in the United States, and whereas June is celebrated as LGBT Pride Month nationwide, and whereas the City of Falls Church has a diverse LGBT community that includes people of all ethnicities, religions, and professions, and whereas everyone should be able to live without fear of prejudice, discrimination, violence, or hatred based on gender, identity, or sexual orientation.
Now, therefore, I, P. David Tarter, Mayor of the City of Falls Church, Virginia, do hereby proclaim the month of June as Lesbian, Gay, Bisexual, and Transgender Pride Month in the City of Falls Church, and urge all members to respect and honor our diverse community, and celebrate, and build a culture of inclusiveness and acceptance. In witness whereof, I have heretofore set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Falls Church to be affixed this ninth day of June 2014.
Mr. Webb, are you here to receive this proclamation?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of the City Council, for this recognition. It has been a very busy month so far already, with Capitol Pride yesterday being celebrated in the district and the region, also with a couple of other events that I'm going to be taking part in, with a couple of federal agencies speaking on behalf of talking about our issues that are now before us. It is a pleasure to live in a city that is very inclusive and open to all who live here in our community, who also give the opportunity for folks within the LGBT community, as well as all others, the opportunity to serve their community, from boards and commissions to elective roles here in the community. So I want to thank you all for recognizing this month.
Much, we appreciate it. I guess we do have a camera. I guess we don't have a camera. Or do we? All right. Do you want to come forward for a photo? Take care. In addition, we have a little bit of unscripted drama this evening. We have a small token of appreciation for our esteemed colleague, Nader Baruch, for his service as mayor. Believe it or not, this has been in process for about five months. I think they carved this special from a tree entirely for you.
Made out of recycling, recyclable materials, right?
But, no, in all seriousness, we want to honor your service as mayor, and for all your hard work, for all your dedication to the office, and your many contributions to the city. So, from your friends and colleagues here on the City Council, we'd like to present you this ceremonial gavel.
Thanks.
Yeah. So, sure.
Photo op.
Yeah. Go on, whatever you wanted to do.
Stand there.
Not in my head.
Get the junk out of the way.
We got it.
Stage setting.
All right.
Pick it up.
Pick that gavel up.
There you go.
One, two, three.
Thank you. And for my wife, who may be watching at home, I promise I will not use this newfound device at home. Never to be used in anger. But my daughter might find a... Yeah. But thank you all. Thank you. It's our pleasure. We appreciate all your hard work and service. Do we have any oaths to be administered to new board and commission members? No. Okay. And I'll open it up to public comment. There's not a lot of folks in the audience tonight, but if anyone wishes to address council, you can do so now. Please limit your comments to three minutes. State your name and address. Is there anyone who wishes to make a public comment at this time? You can also speak when the matter is heard. Tonight, when we call, we'll also present you an opportunity to speak if you would like. So, no public comments at this time. Mr. City Manager, would you like to go ahead and present your report, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor Tarter, and members of council. Just a few things to report. I did want to note that we have a very busy weekend coming up this weekend, and with the Tenner Hill Blues Festival, which will be starting on Friday and go through the weekend. And encourage everyone to go to the Tenner Hill website to get all the details about this music festival in the city. And also, on Saturday, this coming Saturday, at 12:30, we're very pleased to have an unveiling of the plaque for Kenneth R. Burnett dedicating the community center as the Kenneth R. Burnett Building. And Ken Burnett will be in town for that event, and again, that's on Saturday at 12:30. The following weekend, I want to note on the council's schedule that we have the kickoff for the West Broad Street Planning Opportunity Area, and that will be on Saturday, June 21st, at Columbia Baptist Church, at 9:00 a.m. And this is the Planning Opportunity Area that stretches from West Broad Street, from Little Falls Street, to the W&amp;O.D. Bridge. And so we look forward to getting initial public input in terms of the vision and the opportunities for development and preservation of what's good, and envisioning what can be improved in that corridor. Lastly, I would just note, we do this on a regular basis, but we are seeking volunteers for all of our city boards and commissions, and we do have vacancies on many of our boards and commissions at the present time, and I encourage people who might be interested in serving the city to contact Veronica in the City Clerk's Office at 703-248-5014, or check on the city webpage for all the vacancies on the boards and commissions that we do have. That's all I have to report tonight.
I tell you, I didn't recall you saying it, but you may have. Did you mention next week, our City Council meeting, the work session will be held on Wednesday, not on Monday, and will be heard at 7:00, not at 7:30, and will be a walking tour, primarily a walking tour of the downtown area plan? So, both for members of council and the general public, that is a change from our normal practice. Monday is high school graduation, and so to give folks an opportunity to attend that, our hearing has been moved from Monday and to Wednesday.
That's right.
So, we would welcome anyone here on council, but also the general public, to go with us in the walking tour, which begins at the Dogwood Room at 7:00, and will commence to walk a path that, I guess is to be determined, but essentially the downtown portion of the city that is the subject of downtown area plan.
That is correct, and thanks for noting that. That was all my things to report. And so, yes, again, the council's next work session will be on Wednesday, June 18th, starting at 7:00 p.m., and we'll meet first at the Dogwood Room, and then head off on the walking tour, and we'll distribute the map and post that on the webpage for the tour that we're planning to take.
And also, there'll be handicapped access or ADA accessible as well, for people who might have difficulty walking that distance. Accommodation will be made as well.
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Baruch?
Thank you very much. Just a quick question on that. On the area plan, Wyatt, when do we anticipate that we'll see the most recent draft with the comments from boards and commissions?
That will be distributed with the council packet, and so we'll get that out on Friday.
Okay. Is it possible that I could get a draft of that in my box Thursday?
Yes.
If possible?
We will do that.
Make good reading material?
Okay.
Okay. And then, I'm sorry, I missed the date for the Planning Opportunity on the new city area.
That's Saturday, June 21st, at 9:00 a.m. at Columbia Baptist Church, for the West Broad Street Planning Opportunity Area.
Thank you. And Ms. Oliver?
When is the second session scheduled for that Planning Opportunity Area?
That hasn't been planned yet, but typically, it will be about five months further down the road.
Ms. Connally?
And my question is about the communications around that first meeting on June 21st. Is that, how are we telling people about this meeting?
Well, I will get all the, I'll touch base with you in terms of all the ways that we're getting that out, but if, we can always use help.
Just one more follow-up on that. Does the West Broad Planning Opportunity include the new land that's been incorporated into the city now?
No, it stretches from Little Falls Street to the W&amp;O.D. Bridge. So it's what we used to call the Broad Street Village area of the comprehensive plan.
And are we calling the other area, once we do our work, are we giving that a name yet?
No, we haven't yet named the campus area.
Okay. The campus area?
That's kind of how we're calling it.
That's a good name.
George Mason High School Campus Area.
Thank you.
Mr. Duncan?
Thank you. Just a request to staff the post-cancelation of the Budget and Finance Committee meeting normally scheduled for the 24th of June. Because of absences, we don't want to meet without everybody hopefully being able to be there. We will go ahead and plan to meet as scheduled on July 22nd, which is the fourth Thursday of July.
Ms. Connally?
I just have one question about the Process Planning Committee for the campus area. What's the status of that? We saw a draft, and do we have to vote to move it to the next level? Is there opportunity for council to comment on that plan as it is right now?
The group met for a review of the comments that have been received on Thursday, and so the comments were pretty minor in terms of changes to the plan. We do want to follow up with council, just to make sure that it reflects what you're looking for in the plan, but the goal would be to have that be accepted, and then there will be a charter for a steering committee, which would be composed of the same composition as the planning group, that would then oversee and coordinate the planning activities as they would go forward over the next 18 months. And so, that is tentatively on the schedule for Wednesday, the 18th, as well, knowing that the majority of the time for that meeting is going to be spent on our walking tour, but when we come back after that walking tour, we'll want to get the final report from the Process Planning Group and the draft charter for the new steering committee.
That would be an appropriate time to make comments, if you have any.
Before then? You would like my comments?
You can make them then, or before then, either one.
Yeah, we can, we have the draft now. It was going to be in your packets for your next meeting, but I can distribute that immediately, so you have more time to look at it.
Okay.
Why don't you distribute that to all of council?
Yep.
As soon as you're able to. I think it's essentially done, isn't it?
It is. All the work's been done, so.
Okay. Mr. Baruch?
And then, I appreciate the walking tour of the area plan. I think that's a great idea. Hopefully, we can do that for the other areas, once we do them as well. I know that we would be adopting the plan the following week. Given the schedule, it's going to be tight, I just want to make sure that we have a process for incorporating any edits we may have as a result of the review of the paper documents, and then the walking tour.
Mm-hmm.
So we're not delayed, because I know it's, the packets would normally be turned around the next day, so I don't know if staff's going to have enough time to respond to comments, so.
Yeah, if there are major changes, then we're going to need more time. If there are minor changes, then we can probably turn it around.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Z?
As much as I love walking, if it happens to be raining, which is not unheard of, is there a backup plan? Do we carry umbrellas, or do we?
Well, I think the idea would be, why don't we take a look at the weather? I mean, we'll know several days out what the weather's planned for, and then we can come up with a Plan B. I think at the present, we could have the meeting, continue to have the meeting at the Dogwood, as we would on any ordinary day, but my hope is, even if it's raining lightly, for example, that we could still go ahead.
I think we just wear city galoshes and carry umbrellas, you know?
I thought Mr. David Tarter does not make that call on what we do. He's been known to walk. Gets the school through blizzards, from what I understand, so. That was a bad question asked.
We'll play that one by ear, but your point's well taken. Why don't we go ahead and move on to the business on the agenda? Madam Clerk, will you call the first item?
TO 14-24 is an ordinance to amend ordinance 1916 regarding the budget of expenditures and revenues appropriating funds for fiscal year 2014 for the General Fund and for the Capital Improvement Project Fund.
Mr. McContra?
Happy Monday, Council.
Happy Monday.
What you have before you for second reading is a request to amend the FY14 budget. It is asking to appropriate additional funds to meet necessary obligations, and we are setting aside capital reserves, using new revenues, unassigned fund balance, and transferring appropriations between departments. I will be happy to address any items included in this document that you have any questions on.
Has the Budget and Finance Committee reviewed this, and do you have any comments?
I think we talked about it at some length.
Yes, we did. There is one adjustment. There was an additional item that was put on for the first reading, and that's a reallocation of funds between projects for the TJ Elementary School. It's $166,000.
But just to be clear, that was a change before first reading, so there's no changes since first reading.
Are there any comments, questions?
I think the sense of the budget, and I don't want to speak for Phil, but, Phil, do you want me to fill in? We discussed this at some length in the Budget and Finance Committee meeting, and I think that there was consensus to move this forward, and that at least the Budget and Finance Committee was good to go with what was being proposed. So, that's my recollection.
Okay.
But there was some lengthy discussion about it.
Okay. Do you want to repeat that?
No, I don't. I don't want to repeat the discussion.
All right. So, any other comments or questions? Do we have a motion? We'll take a motion, and I'll open to public comment.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve TO 14-24 on second reading.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. The matter is open to the public. Is there any member of the public that wishes to address this item? If you do, please feel free to come forward at this time. Seeing no one, the matter is closed to the public. Is there any additional City Council comments, questions? Madam Clerk, will you call the roll call vote?
Mr. Baruch?
Yes.
Ms. Connally?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Z?
Yes.
Mayor Tarter?
Yes.
The motion passes. Thank you, Council.
Okay. Let's move to the next item. Madam Clerk, if we could.
TO 14-25 is an ordinance authorizing the issuance of general obligation bonds in the City of Falls Church, Virginia, in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $15,600,000 to pay costs incident to constructing, reconstructing, equipping, and/or re-equipping in whole or in part the Mount Daniel Elementary School, and requesting the Circuit Court to order a special referendum election on the question of whether the issuance of such bonds should be authorized.
Okay. Mr. Shields?
Mayor Tarter, members of council, with the adoption of the capital improvements program, there is a project to expand the Mount Daniel Elementary School, and the amounts that are appropriated for that total $15.6 million. The amount is appropriated actually over three fiscal years, with $1 million appropriated in the current year, fiscal 2014, $8 million in 2015, and the final $6.6 million is in the budget in the CIP for FY16. What this ordinance would do is, A, authorize the issuance of bonds for the full $15.6 million project. It also authorizes a referendum, so this issuance of bonds can be put to the voters at your election this coming November, and then contingent upon a favorable vote by the voters of the city, then only then would the bonds actually be issued. The anticipated debt service for this project, for the debt issuance, based on interest rate assumptions between 3.5% and 4.5%, the annual debt service can be expected to be between $1,032,000 and $1,116,000 per year, and this increase in debt service would need to be factored then into the 2017 and FY2018 annual budgets. With that introduction, I'd be happy to answer any questions about this ordinance. This ordinance is before the council on first reading tonight.
Any questions, comments? Mr. Duncan?
Thank you. So, just to be clear, as you said, this will go to referendum in November. Can you just walk us through the timetable of that, the language, and when it gets on the ballot, and all of that?
One thing I can speak to is that we need at least 81 days before the election to take it to the Arlington Courts for them to enter in the order. The second reading for this ordinance is scheduled for July 14th, and that'll give us about three weeks to do that work with adequate time. For any further details, I would defer to the city attorney.
That's accurate.
And if I could ask, let's presume that we go forward as anticipated, could we get a refresher on what council's role would be, could be, not right now, but when it's appropriate, to end the referendum campaign on this topic? What council's official position is, if it supports it, what individual members may do, where they may do it, their participation in various fora that would occur, probably as citizens, groups, organized to inform the public about this, and so on.
This will be somewhat of a replay of the referendum on the water, the sale of the water system. City Council's able to publish information for the public, for the voters, but you can't take a position for or against the referendum, in much the same way if there are public sessions, as we did with the water sale. You know, city council members can appear and speak to the issue, speak as individuals if they wish, but city council can't officially take a position at the, you know, spending money on behalf of the city in support of or against such a referendum. Obviously, by putting it forward to the voters, city council has taken a position. There's nothing wrong with that.
Okay. If I could just ask one follow-up question. This is sort of being handled tonight as a financial matter, which is appropriate, of course. Would we expect that, on second reading, the schools' folks would be here perhaps to offer an explanation of why this bond project is being undertaken, and, you know, have some information that would be available to the community that would explain why we're taking the action that we're taking?
I will relay that request to the superintendent.
Okay. I just think that might be useful, and I notice Mr. Benton is here, and it's, you know, it's a quiet night and a quick meeting, but this is a highly, highly significant act that we're embarking upon here, one that will address enrollment growth concerns that are especially intense at the lower grade levels, K through 2, and so I think it would behoove us to explain to the community, this is a big deal that we are embarking on here. Thank you.
Mr. Baruch?
And for Mr. Tave's benefit, I think that I had raised this issue before of what council could do in relation to a referendum, so there may be something in Mr. Foster's files on this point. There may be something he sent the previous council on this about what we could do or couldn't do, because that was a big issue, that some of us felt very frustrated about what we could do as a council regarding the referendum. And I think there's certain obligations onto the city as well, from what I recall, but I'll leave that up to you to, but I don't think we have to reinvent the wheel. I think there's something in the file on that.
I'll do some digging there, and to the extent it needs to be updated to apply to this particular situation, I'd be glad to send you all something.
Thank you. Other comments, questions? Do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move adoption of TO 14-25 on first reading, and schedule a public hearing and second reading on July 14th, 2014, and advertise the same according to law.
Do we have a second?
Second to the motion.
Okay, Mr. Z on the second. Before we take the roll call, I'll open this to the public. Is there any member of the public that wishes to address this item? Mr. Shields? I don't know if you qualify as the public, but you're welcome to speak.
I'm not trying to preempt the public, if there are any other folks that want to speak, but I did want to just reflect for the record that the intent of the motion is to adopt the ordinance as revised. Is that correct? And that's the version that is on the dais with the council?
Correct. That is the version that I intended to move, and...
Do you want to go ahead and just make the motion again?
Okay. I move adoption of TO 14-25 as revised on first reading, and schedule a public hearing and second reading on July 14th, 2014, and advertise the same according to law.
Do we have a second?
Second to the motion.
Mr. Z on the second. Again, before we take a vote, I'll open this matter to the public. Is there any member of the public that wishes to address this matter? Seeing none, the matter is closed to the public. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll call vote, please?
Mr. Baruch?
Yes.
Ms. Connally?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Z?
Yes.
Mayor Tarter?
Yes.
The motion passes. Thank you, Council.
Thank you. Okay, let's move to the next item. Looks like this is consent item, and this is appointments. Mr. Z is Chair of the Appointments Committee?
Yes. I would like to move the appointment of the following recommended slated candidates: reappointment of Jonathan Frisch to the Architecture Advisory Board; reappointment of Craig Chaney to the Human Services Advisory Council; reappointment of Stephanie Oppenheimer to the Library Board of Trustees; make a new appointment for Christina Godwin to Girls' Home Advisory Board; and new appointment Susan Kiratine to the Northern Virginia Community College Board.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Ms. Connally on the second. Is there any member of the public who wishes to address this matter? Seeing none, the matter is closed to the public. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll call vote, please?
Mr. Baruch?
Yes.
Ms. Connally?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Z?
Yes.
Mayor Tarter?
Yes.
Thank you, Council.
Is there any other items? Doesn't appear so. Is there any business not on the agenda?
Mayor Tarter, I think if we can go back, I don't think we had a summary of the written comments we received from the public.
Well, I don't know if we've, did we receive any written comments?
Yeah, we did. I just noticed them in our green packet.
I didn't see that. That's a good point. Thank you. Thanks for that good catch, Mr. Baruch. Madam Clerk, will you go ahead and summarize the written comments?
Fred Foss of 119 East Jefferson Street complained that street signs directing traffic in and out of the North Gate Building had not been installed, which was creating a traffic hazard in the area. Gregory V. Cox of 613 Poplar Drive noted increased flooding in the basements in his neighborhood during recent rainstorms, and asked if it could be due to the roadwork on Laura Drive. He asked the city to find the root of the issue and resolve it quickly. Steve Selby, Vice Chair of the Recreation and Parks Advisory Board, urged the council to recommend the purchase of 500 Limb Place to the Planning Commission in order to enable the expansion of Roberts Park. And Hannah Jordan, Chair of the Friends of the Falls Church Homeless Shelter Incorporated, announced that the Friends would be petitioning the Board would be petitioning the Board of Zoning Appeals to allow the shelter to open on November 15th rather than their traditional December 1st start date. The Falls Church Homeless Shelter is part of the Fairfax County Hypothermia Prevention Program, and the change would put the shelter more closely in line with other shelters in the network which have a November 1st opening date.
Thank you. Mr. Duncan?
Mr. Mayor, I wonder if the manager might have any comments on the, Mr. Foss's letter? I feel like when I was there last time, there were some signs up, and this confused me when I received, when we received this.
The signage is not satisfactory, and so we do intend to install better signage that will mark where you can take a left turn, where you can't, and so that's still in process. The signs have been ordered, but they've not yet been installed.
Okay. Okay, is any other business not on the agenda, or any council member comments? Mr. Baruch?
I just had one follow-up comment. Mr. Shields, I know that I talked to you and Cindy offline about a public safety issue, possibly dealing with utilities, and I raised it at the work session. Has that been addressed?
I've made a phone call, but I've not yet gotten a formal response. So, I've raised it with our government representative with Cox, but we've not yet gotten a formal response as to what their communication with respect to that event was, and so as soon as I get that.
Have they acknowledged that there was a problem?
They have received the complaint. They have not responded as to what they think happened, or what the deficiency in the communication plan was, and that's what we're looking for.
Okay. If it's not resolved by the work session, I'd like to know about it, and happy to publicly discuss the issue a little bit more, but I'd, again, would want to give them an opportunity to let us know what happened first. So, and again, if any council members have questions about what it is that we're talking about, I'm happy to talk about it, but I'd like to at least give the provider an opportunity to explain things first before adding to this at this point. Thank you.
Mr. Duncan?
Thank you. Let me just rattle through a couple of things here. First, thank you to the staff, the Economic Development Office, Chamber of Commerce, and others who were involved in setting up the ribbon-cutting grand opening of the I U B Carpet Service facility on South Washington Street. Mayor and several of us were there. A festive event, a great business. Used to be in Arlington, has now moved into the City of Falls Church with one of its outlets. Second, I wonder if, Mr. Shields, you could give us an update at the June 23rd meeting on the status of the trailers at TJ. Perhaps the school folks could give us an update on when that work is going to be beginning. I guess school will be over by then, or pretty closely. Something I guess will happen during the summer. Third, Ms. Oliver, the Foster's Cable Access Committee meets on Wednesday. If we had discussed that I might take that back as an assignment, because you are overloaded with assignments, I would be happy to do that, and we'll plan to attend that Wednesday 6:30 meeting, if that's all right with you. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you for your work on that group. You took on way more than your share, and I appreciate that. Finally, Mr. Shields, there's a posting in the news press in response to the very good article, I thought, about the impervious surface and stormwater fee and so forth. There's a posting there I noticed yesterday from Mr. DeSalle of Sisler Stone, which raises some interesting substantive questions about how we calculate a driveway, I guess, that is meant to be impervious, that is meant to be pervious in Mr. DeSalle's view, and is not, and apparently the view of the city. I just feel like, you know, there's still a lot of discussion in the community about the new stormwater fee and the credit program and such. I wonder if, just might make sure that our staff responds to him. He's somebody you see around town a lot, big longstanding business in the city. I feel like we ought to have a communication line open to him to make sure everybody is understanding why it is we're doing what we're doing. Thank you.
Any other council member comments, questions? Okay, why don't we move on to the next item, which is approval of the minutes of the April 16th, 2014 hearing. Are there any edits to those minutes?
If I may, I had some edits and comments that I provided the city clerk's office, and I know that they diligently tried to make the revisions. Unfortunately, I haven't had a chance to look at them, so I would propose that perhaps we defer these until the next meeting.
Anyone have any issue with that?
It sounds like Phil may have edits as well.
Okay.
I haven't had a chance to look at them.
All right, unless there's any objection, then we'll go ahead and defer consideration of these minutes to our next regular meeting.
Thank you, and I would encourage other council members to look at the minutes as well, because it was the budget, and there was a lot of, when I looked at it, there was free-for-all that happened back and forth, and good exchanges. So, I know that one, I for one, sometimes when I'm sitting up here talking double negatives, was I went back and listened to the tape myself, which caused great confusion in the way that the comments were summarized. So, I would encourage other council members to perhaps take a look.
Okay, so that, those minutes again will be deferred to our next regularly scheduled meeting. Hopefully, I want to have a chance to take a look at those prior to that meeting. It appears there's no other business for this meeting that's open to the public, and in fact, it's time to go into closed session, so unless there's any other council request or comments, I'm going to go ahead and entertain a motion to go into closed session. Upon a motion made by council member.
Duncan?
Seconded by council member.
Oliver.
And passed by a voice vote of city council. Council wanted a closed session pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A1, Discussion of Perspective Candidates for Employment of Specific Public Officers, Appointees, or Employees of Any Public Body, City Attorney and City Clerk Recruitment. Councilmember Baruch?
Yes.
Councilmember Connolly?
Yes.
Councilmember Duncan?
Yes.
Councilmember Oliver?
Yes.
Councilmember Z?
Yes.
Councilmember Charter. Okay. We are going to go to closed session. I guess we'll go upstairs. Is that what you're proposing? We are now going to go into closed session, and we'll see you guys soon, hopefully. So, thank you for coming this evening.